Meeting of June 11th, 2024 is now in session. This hybrid meeting is being recorded and may be accessed by WebEx. The meeting link is on the calendar at Burlington.org. If any board members are remote, and Jeremy is remote tonight, from what I can tell, all votes will be made by roll call. If connectivity is lost and we have a quorum in person, the meeting will continue. I don't read this at every meeting because I think that it kind of loses its impact when you read it at every meeting, but I think this is a good night to read it. Our equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Bond.
Aye.
Ms. Masato.
Aye.
Ms. Novoicic.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. That's five zero. Approval of the meeting minutes of 5:13:24. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of 5:13:24. Is there any question, comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Bond.
Aye.
Ms. Masato.
Aye.
Ms. Novoicic.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 5:14:24.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Hearing none. Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Bond.
Aye.
Ms. Masato.
Aye.
Ms. Novoicic.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's five zero on both. Jeremy, where are you? It looks very nice.
I am in Alder, Montana, about 100 miles from civilization using satellite lot five.
Well, you've got a pretty blue sky behind you. Okay, the next item is public participation. This segment is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes. If you're here to speak about something that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that topic, and at that point in time, comments will also be limited to three minutes. Is there someone here to speak on an item not on the agenda? Mr. Young. You've become a regular.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me and my call, I'm sorry.
This one here? I need more training. Thank you for the opportunity to come here. I'm coming here because on May 27th, we celebrate a Memorial Day. And I make it a point to go to the event that Chris Hannaford puts on. I take it very seriously. I think it's an obligation that all of us have, whether you're elected or not. And when I was in Quincy, Massachusetts, they also had, or when I grew up in Whitman, Massachusetts, but Quincy, they even, you know, the attendance, and what I'm getting to tonight is, I only saw two elected officials there. I may have missed some, but that was the chairman of the select board, Mr. Morandi and Mr. Teigs. I know that Mike Aspejo reached out to me. He said he was so ill, and he usually goes to them, and he couldn't make it. But, you know, if people are elected, they're saying they're leaders, they do need to lead, and it's in a lot of, lot of different ways. And we have a lack of voting, I've heard, in this town quite often. And actually, the voting rate is abysmal, not just Burlington, but everywhere. But what I want to say is, maybe everybody on this committee had something like they were ill. But I'm going to ask you to please come out in November to Veterans Day and participate in future events, because we just said the Pledge of Allegiance, and you do that before every meeting, and I think that's great. But we really wouldn't have a country if we didn't have men and women that stood up, and some of them paid the ultimate sacrifice, and some have mental and physical injuries that they have for the rest of their lives. And it's also their families, and there are some Gold Staff families, too. So I think it is very important. It shows the young people how important it is. So sometimes you learn by seeing, not just by what you hear. So thank you for this time.
You're welcome.
I hope you'll take this into account, and I certainly hope, unless I'm sick or there's some major reason in my life, you'll see me at these events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may make a quick comment to Mr. Young.
Should, Jeremy.
Mr. Young, I represent the school committee and the legionaries at the event, and then place flags the Wednesday prior as well. Thank you.
And just, DR information, just so you know, I, on the 27th?
Yeah, that was the Monday.
Yeah, I was at Mass General Hospital with my veteran. He had had a run-in with a table saw.
Sorry to hear that. So.
But you're, you're absolutely right, and we appreciate your input.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's okay. Is this someone who wants to speak?
I don't know if there's more in the crowd, but.
Yes, there is somebody online. Heather Halloran.
Okay, let's go online, and then we'll come back here. So, Ms. Halloran?
Yes, thank you for listening. So I've worked in Burlington Public Schools for over 12 years now, and I've never done anything like this, speaking in front of you guys or any kind of forum. But as a union member, I've been watching the contract negotiations closely, and for the first time, to be honest, I'm pretty angry about it. In addition to lengthening the Elementary School Day, the school committee is also proposing to take over teachers' flex time for the use of meetings and trainings at least three times a week. And I'm here to ensure that you understand why I would never vote for a contract like that. For instance, yesterday, I was in the classroom an hour before the kids came down the hall, and I used that time to meet with a special ed colleague. I was also there two hours after the kids left, and part of that time was spent working with my team. After that, I took my mom shopping, made dinner for the kids, watered the garden, to make a prototype of a craft that I was supposed to do today, and it was a good thing I did because it was a disaster. And so at 8:30, I was texting colleagues for help and looked over my budget around nine. And then at seven o'clock again this morning, I was right back at it. That kind of a juggle works for me now, but it wouldn't have when my kids were younger. When my kids were younger, I had to put them on the bus in the morning, and then I took home a lot more work than I need to do now. I was correct in papers at my daughter's lacrosse games. I was planning lessons at Leahy when my father was sick. I was organizing my materials every Sunday, watching football. Most of what elementary school teachers do occurs when kids are not in front of us. It's then that we clean up the messes, that we correct all the work that was completed, that we reflect on what worked and what needs work still. We confer with colleagues, reach out to parents, complete forms, fill in tables. We gather all the materials and prep for the next day, organizing it so that the day can go smoothly for the children. And we're also shopping for the materials that we maybe didn't foresee needing the prior May when we had to do our budgets. So I'm not complaining. I love this job, and that's the only way to get it done and to be effective. But from late August until late June, and later than in many districts, I'm drowning. The only saving grace is that I have control over how my time is spent. I can squeeze in work into the cracks of my personal life wherever I can, so that when I am with my students, I'm prepared and I'm present. We are all dedicated, talented professionals, and we're drowning. And the school committee is asking us to swim a little bit further and to carry the burden of meetings and trainings. So I just need you to hear me say that I don't have more time to give. And as a union member, I will not vote for a contract that surrenders any control over my planning time or my flex time, or a contract that includes longer school days without the trade-off of early release days. Thank you for your time. I appreciate how valuable it is. You're welcome.
Someone in the room who'd like to speak? The lady in the first row.
That's why I'm trying to do what I can.
Is it on? Okay, good. Hi, everybody. My name is Liz Jimenez. I am an 11-year resident of Burlington. I have three students currently in BPS, including my son Dan next to me, two seniors, Dan and his twin, and also a rising seniors and a rising eighth grader. I'm here because I understand that BPS is considering cutting a music teacher position between MSMS and BPS. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but I understand there was somebody that might be leaving at the middle school, and that might just be shuffled instead of hiring a new staff member. In my view, this is a huge mistake and a disservice to our school population. Endless studies have shown negative consequences of cutting support for performing arts in schools. If I'd had more than two hours' warning, I would have put together a bibliography of my sources, but for now, you'll have to take a rain check. Support for the performing arts lets a huge portion of our population find a place of belonging and support, especially those who might not fit in the mainstream of the more loudly-promoted athletics. It builds leadership skills and self-esteem, in addition to a deeper understanding and appreciation for the arts of all kinds. In many cases, performing arts is the one place in the school building that a student feels safe, supported, capable, and happy, much like was discussed as you read the equity statement, or to start the meeting. Our music teachers, especially in our experience, Mr. Ketterer, Ms. Holmgren, and I know Mr. Mullin at the middle school, do unbelievable work in creating this place of growth and acceptance for their students. To move them around or weigh them down with additional ensembles beyond the scope of the job they accepted is a great way to create additional instability for our students. I know the main reason cited is declining enrollment in the BHS music program. I believe much can be attributed to the downstream effects of the COVID disruption. Students who were in middle school when everything shut down are today's high schoolers. Of course, their exposure to and education in music was interrupted. Additionally, within the current BHS class schedule, there's only space for a single elective for nearly all ninth and 10th graders, and in many cases, 11th and 12th as well. This forces many students to sacrifice music for a different class, and with our teachers already stretched thin, there are very few extracurricular opportunities for students to get involved in music outside of the limited bounds of the school day. Spreading those resources even thinner will not help the situation. Additional support for the teachers will mean additional support for the students. I also think this is too quick a reaction. We need time for the next wave of kids to make it to the high school. Cutting staffing is a great way to cut off any progress that we are making. For instance, after three years of significant decline, we are looking at doubling the enrollment in marching band for next season, from about 35.
I think it was 61 at the last count now.
And then going up to, possibly in the 60s. Where am I? Oh, thank you. This is thanks in large part to the work of Mr. Ketterer, one of the newest members of the BPS Performing Arts Department. In addition to the incredible work he's done with our current high schoolers, whose performance level has grown so much this year that it nearly brought me to tears, not to mention how much the kids adore working with him. He put in many days of recruitment at the middle school, and we now have a whole new batch of wonderful, enthusiastic young musicians joining us at the marching band icebreaker rehearsals this week, a whole new group of students ready to find their home in the music wing. Orchestra is another wonderful example, which I know some of our students are here. 10 years ago, there was no strings department, strings program in Burlington at all. Three years ago, the string orchestra was a quartet. It has now tripled. This last concert, there were, I think, almost 15, and again, their musicianship is growing and growing from one performance to the next, thanks to the hard work of Ms. Weller and the wonderful addition of Ms. Holmgren. If the town is serious about trying to grow its strings program, which it absolutely should be, then they should be adding staff to support that goal, not cutting it and then wondering why it didn't work. I know money's always tight, but cutting staffing in the music department is absolutely the wrong direction for our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
No, I can't, I think.
Anyone in the?
Hello?
Someone online?
Yes, this is Kristen Folsenetti. I am the president of the PAPA, which is the Burlington Performing Arts Association. As I am traveling, but I just want to echo what Liz has said. I agree with her 100%. I think having Mrs. Holmgren and Mr. Ketterer this year have literally done leaps and bounds to increase this program, to make it better for our children, and I cannot say enough wonderful things about them. I think making any changes would definitely just not be good for our kids. I'm sorry. It just wouldn't. Just hearing this last minute is just like, like I, you know, I'm hearing this again through grapevines, and I just don't think we want to, we want to think about what we do before any actions are taken in place, especially for the sake of our kids.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? A gentleman in the front row, the second row.
Want to tell us who you are?
Members of the school, members of the school committee, Dr. Conti, parents, teachers, and fellow students. There's no point in saying good evening because it certainly is not one. My name is Brenton Chu, and I'm a 10th grader in orchestra at Burlington High School, and I'm speaking in regards to Burlington High School's music program. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the incredible work Mrs. Holmgren has done for our music program, and specifically the orchestra. Mrs. Holmgren has worked tirelessly to develop the orchestras, to develop the high school's orchestra musically and foster a community between all members. With Mr. Bryant of Marshall Simons leaving, Mrs. Holmgren will be moved to the middle school to fill the role, leaving her position at BHS not to be filled due to budget costs. This is an issue. This is not acceptable. I, along with all of Mrs. Holmgren's students, are deeply concerned. Teaching orchestra and music education is highly specialized and skilled, meaning that a normal substitute teacher simply cannot fulfill the requirements. In fact, the orchestra has already had to deal with the same issue this year. When Mrs. Weller left her position, the orchestra and chorus were given a long-term sub who could not help because they didn't have the background or experience in teaching music. Moving Mrs. H to the middle school and further not filling her position is not acceptable. The reason of decreased enrollment is simply not true, as orchestra, as orchestra membership has grown from four to 13 members. In what world does an increase of threefold signify decreasing membership? To echo Mrs. Folsenetti, the school committee must make music education a priority. The school committee must hire an orchestra teacher to either fill Mrs. H's position at the high school or fill Mr. Bryant's position at the, at the middle school so that Mrs. H can remain at the high school, especially so given $176.8 million operating budget for fiscal year 2025 that this school committee passed, an increase of 5% over 2024. Not having an orchestra or choral program is truly offensive, as other towns in Massachusetts, such as Belmont and Lexington, whose, whose budgets are smaller than Burlington's, are able to support multiple orchestras at their respective high schools. Let me reiterate, moving Mrs. H to the middle school and not filling her position at the high school is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
Suzanne, I'm going to mess this up. I apologize in advance. Alapetus? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm also here representing Mrs. Holmgren. I just need to say my daughter is in her chorus. She started last year with Mrs. Weller, and we absolutely loved her so much, and it was a very difficult transition to see her leave. And what was more frustrating for me was they had a substitute in the classroom who was not able to, you know, help the students at that time, and they actually, for the one of the courses, it was my daughter, who was a junior, that took over, read the syllabus, and would be with the students and conduct chorus with them. They had fun, it was nice, but they needed structure. And so when they finally hired Mrs. Holmgren, everything changed for the better. She is absolutely wonderful. Recently, we just had the music performing arts banquet, and unfortunately, you know, Mr. Middleton wasn't there to see, but all of the students just had so many wonderful praises for Mrs. Holmgren, and she's only been here for six months. She's one of those teachers that people just really, really want to have and really impact them in their lives. And please, I'm begging you, from the bottom of my heart, from my child, from her friends, from all of us, please do not move Mrs. Holmgren to the middle school. And that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, just for clarification purposes, I want everybody to understand that the actual school committee doesn't make those decisions. It's up to the superintendent.
Assistant superintendent. So, he's here, and she's here.
Are they all being listening at least?
They're listening. They're right here, listening to every word that's being said. I just wanted to clarify that it's not like the school committee can take a vote and change it. It's up to the superintendent, and he's hearing everything you're saying, I guarantee it.
It's just difficult because it wasn't on the agenda, so nobody was prepared, and it just got leaked out two hours ago. Otherwise, there would be every single parent and every single student in that room right now, begging and pleading. Because Mr. K, Mr. Ketterer, and Mrs. Holmgren are amazing, amazing teachers, and they should just continue to do what they're doing so that we can continue to grow and get more students. There's no decrease in students. I don't know where that's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that lady in the front.
Let me guess, you're in chorus.
I'm not. I was, though. I'm in orchestra now.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Maya Barkley. I have lived in Burlington my whole life. I'm a junior at BHS, and I'm in the orchestra. I recently discovered.
Get a little bit closer to that.
Oh, sorry.
Just pull it closer to you.
Closer? Okay. Oh, yeah, that works. Okay. I have recently discovered that the middle school music teacher, Mr. Ketterer, is leaving MSMS, and that the new current high school teacher, Ms. Holmgren, will be replacing him. I also discovered that Ms. Holmgren will not be replaced, which is plain wrong because it takes away opportunities for passionate students. I've always loved music classes, but the minute Ms. Holmgren became our student teacher, I've blossomed as a student. I'm already a more competent player because I feel comfortable in her class, and the orchestra as a whole has never sounded better, which is because of how kind-hearted and talented Ms. Holmgren is. I already asked her for a letter of recommendation for college because I'm thinking about pursuing music in the future, and without Ms. Holmgren, or without a music teacher next year in general, I could be having an inconsistent experience in high school with music, which would negatively affect my future. We already had to deal with months without a teacher due to Ms. Weller switching her teaching position, which was not really enjoyable because we didn't have anybody to teach us. We just had a sub who wasn't prepared. The music department is finally flourishing, and without a teacher next year, there will be the futures of young students negatively impacted. You also said in the statement beforehand that every student has the right to a fair educational and inclusive experience, and without a music teacher, we will not have the experience you promised us. I know that there are many students who wish they could be here to support Ms. Holmgren right now, but are probably busy. Overall, Ms. Holmgren has positively affected not only the music department, but BHS as a whole, and without a music teacher, my future will not be fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the back row there? Sorry, I don't know a lot of names, partly because I can't see you well enough.
Hi. My name is Barbara Martinez. I'm a Burlington resident and a parent of two children in the Burlington Public Schools, and I have a daughter who's in chorus. This is her second year. I think I bring a somewhat unique perspective to this conversation because I have the unique privilege of having accompanied Mr. Ketterer and Ms. Holmgren to Orlando for the recent very, very important field trip for the, for the contest down there. I had the privilege of seeing them both with the students, and I can't really express how impactful it is for our children to have adult role models like Mr. Ketterer and Ms. Holmgren to, to look up to, to trust, to feel safe with, and to aspire to. That is what I saw when I went on this trip. My child has absolutely flourished. Again, others have mentioned, you know, we had a little bit of upheaval in the music department. Ms. Holmgren came in mid-year. Somehow, she managed to just invigorate the entire department. My child went from being in chorus to now moving on to chamber singers, did her first musical, and just joined the marching band as well. So it can kind of show you how much energy has been injected into the music department because of these two amazing human beings. I want to echo what someone else said about the banquet that was last week. The number of kids that said, "You changed my life. I am so grateful to have you as an adult to aspire to be like," was honestly shocking. It was, it was really amazing to see the impact that these teachers have had. I just thought it was really important for everyone in this room to hear that during this really important time in high school students' development, to have that kind of experience and to have that kind of relationship with their teachers is life-changing. I beg you not to change that for them now. They've built a beautiful thing right now, and please don't undercut it. To also bring into the record, I thought I would share how important the music department has become to my family.
It's upside down.
Thank you. This is a collage from the trip.
It's beautiful.
For the justice of music. So that's how important the music department is to our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is someone else online?
Yes, Valerie Burns.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
I wanted to discuss that I have been working at this district for 21 years, and I will not vote for any contract that gives away the ability for me to control my flex time. We teachers have more work to do than in the contract hours we are given, and we are constantly working for free because we're trying to do the very best for our students that are in front of us, and the students in front of us have a lot of needs, especially after COVID and all the trauma that we see and the gap in learning, right? So we're trying to provide social-emotional support to our students. We are preparing social-emotional lessons for them. We are differentiating because our Bed Ed staff, we don't have enough people. We are working with the ELL teachers to help the students who don't understand English well. We are working on report cards and conferences and all those things that we do, and it doesn't happen during contract hours. Last year, I was, 25 classrooms moved at Memorial, and we were given three hours' pay to pack up the classroom. I'd been in that classroom for like 20 years. It took more than three hours to pack up. Then I had to come in on my summer vacation for two weeks to unpack that classroom. I didn't get paid for any of that. Let me under, let me let you know that the custodians would not work for free, the cafeteria workers would not work for free, the school secretaries, nurse, pretty much the only position in our school that works for free are teachers. So to be able to be told that we're going to be working a longer school day, a longer school year, and we're going to take away my ability to be able to schedule when I do my work. If I get in at seven o'clock, like I was this morning, to prepare materials before my students arrive, to print out certificates, to laminate, to make a parent phone call, and then I ditch my day, and, you know, then to be told that I have to stay after school for an hour for meetings or trainings. and, you know, then to be told that I have to stay after school for an hour for meetings or trainings seems excessive to me. Um, so I just wanted to be sure that I was clear that, um, the longer school day, the longer school year, without an appropriate cost of living raise means a pay cut. And a pay cut to teachers who are working way more hours than we get paid for to begin with. So it's starting to feel a little like we're not appreciated for all that we do. And understand that I will not be voting for any contract that gives away my flexible spending time. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room, in the back row? Or, yeah, we're sort of the back row. Jenna Gotti? Hi, Jen.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jenna Gotti. I've been an educator in Burlington for 21 years. I have two children in the Burlington Schools, one here at the high school and one at Marshall Simons. I currently teach music at Pine Glen and I also serve my building as the PR and R rep. Before I get into why I'm really here today, I just want to echo all my, I have a couple of former students here and what's going on at the high school and, um, Beth Holmgren and Tim Ketterer have done an amazing job this year and I certify everything you guys have said and what you're talking about. But what I'm really here to unite is, I'm here to ask you to start a dialogue amongst yourselves about the proposed changes brought forward in negotiations regarding, regarding time on learning and extending the elementary school day, as well as the BEA's proposed elementary early release schedule. The school committee's current proposal on this matter would reduce elementary educators' overall planning time by 46% by taking away that autonomous flex time. The BEA has countered with different proposals that would protect vital planning time for educators and still accomplish those time on learning goals that you want, but these have been ignored at the table. The BEA is fighting very hard for a plan that allows educators to meet students' needs. In the 21 years I've taught here, elementary teachers and the school district as a whole has seen an enormous increase in the number of special education staff, ELL teachers, counselors, psychologists, and special programs like the DSC that runs at Pine Glen. While all of this additional staffing is an asset to our schools, it also signifies the striking increase in the number of students who need specialized instruction and accommodations every day. It is increasingly difficult to collaborate with such a large number of people within our school community in this current schedule. Teachers are feeling the time crunch, as you've heard other people say. But more importantly, kids and parents are feeling it too. The committee's proposal to add 10 minutes to the day will not create more time to communicate, it would create less. Flex time is often the only time that teachers like me can touch base and speak with any of these other educators in the building to coordinate and meet these students' needs. And cutting that time by 46% to stick with a school schedule that really hasn't changed in 30 years makes what is already really difficult practically impossible. No public service entity can remain stagnant for 30 years and thrive. This need to change school schedules is an issue that has been addressed by every other school district in Middlesex County by implementing some sort of early release schedule. Burlington, our district, which often prides itself on being forward-thinking and ahead of the curve, is not just behind the curve. We're lost by ourselves in the past. The BEA is committed to a solution that will bring us into the 21st century and will allow our district to embody the same growth mindset as literally all of our peers and neighbors. The problems we have now would continue if the district's proposal was adopted. Currently, educators are being pulled from their students for meetings, trainings, workshops, and professional development that occur during regular school days. At the elementary level, this is especially damaging and in some situations, it has been downright dangerous. Tier-two services cannot be delivered, counseling sessions are canceled, and students rely on substitutes for their instruction instead of their every teacher, if a substitute can be found. If not, kindergarten IAs and academic tutors are pulled from their students to cover those classes. This disrupts learning not only for the students whose teacher was pulled away, but for the children whose instructor is being displaced in order to find that coverage. What good is increasing time on learning if these kinds of disruptions continue? The BEA has presented evidence that shows early release models work in every other district in the county in order to fully meet the growing needs of their student and their staff. When I mention there is danger in this practice, this is not hyperbole. A few months ago, in an elementary school here in town, there was only one member of a crisis team left in the building while the rest of the team was at central office for meetings. And a student had a major mental health crisis. The situation was dangerous for the student. Thankfully, the student came to no harm, but the people who should have been the first line of defense were not there. And why weren't they there? Because they were at a meeting that could have been held during the proposed early release time. Educators need more, not less, time within their contracted day to plan and collaborate with their colleagues. That's why one of the BEA's proposals is to increase the date not by 10 minutes, but by 25 to help accomplish this. Accepting the BEA's proposal does not cost the committee assent. You don't need ways and means approval, you don't need town meeting to take a vote. This body has the ability to make a change and substantially improve the working conditions of all of the educators working here, the learning conditions and the safety of our students, and move us out of the past by discussing and debating these series of proposals that would finally allow educators the needed time for planning and collaboration. Our children need this. So I'm asking each of you to start a dialogue amongst yourselves and each of you look at the evidence that has already been presented to your bargaining team. As a parent and an educator, I want to get this right. We've got to get this right. Adding restrictions to a model put in place over 30 years ago is not the solution. Everyone else around us has, has recognized that and moved on. We need to move forward too. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything? No?
Bill Asano. Uh, good evening. My name is Bill Asano, a Burlington resident, parent of two Burlington students, precinct four town meeting member, and a Burlington educator, finishing my 19th year as a classroom teacher at Fox Hill. Uh, Burlington teachers are currently in negotiations for a new contract and I'd like to speak about the length of our school year, the need for early release days built into our school schedule, um, and the need to settle for, settle a fair contract. Um, it has been very obvious that, uh, early release days have been a source of contentment um, during negotiations. Our school year is the longest of any surrounding towns and as Jen just said, we are the only school in the Middlesex League that does not have early release days. I was just speaking yesterday with a, um, teacher in a surrounding district at a field trip that I was at with my students. I asked her when the last day of school is and theirs last day is two days from now, June 13th. She asked when we started, I said before Labor Day. And she asked why we're getting out so late. She thought that we must give all the religious holidays off. Clearly, that's not the case. The case is that we have built-in PD, PD days that lengthen our school year unlike any other school district in, in this area. We do not have early release days built into our school calendar and that is becoming more and more detrimental to Burlington teachers and students. Our conversation continued between me and this fellow educator. So she said, "So you don't have early release days?" I replied, "No." And her next question to me says it all. She said, "How the hell do you do your job?" I will repeat that. Without early release days, "How the hell do you do your job?" Is what she asked me. I can't tell you how many times math reading specialists, uh, regular ed teachers, sped teachers were pulled out of their classrooms to attend data meetings, ELA math trainings, IEP meetings, 504 meetings. Uh, last Friday, June 7th, there were about 25 classroom teachers, total teachers, 25 total teachers, including reading specialists, classroom teachers, sped staff, ELL teachers required to attend a two-hour meeting, um, which, the training was great, it was beneficial, but there were 25 educators in Burlington not in their classroom supporting students. Um, I have heard school committee members say that parents don't want early release days. To that point, I have heard more parents, residents, community members ask and/or complain about us starting before Labor Day and getting out later than any other district around. It is not a matter of wanting early release days, it is a need. We cannot meet student needs without them. I would also say to any parents that don't want early release days, that is not really an option anymore. This profession needs it, the educators need it. Early release days are not, they're not, we're not here to make our jobs easier. This is going to make our jobs manageable, it's going to make us better educators. With the amount of money that the district is spending on ELA and math consultants and the anticipated changes to curriculum and the ever-expanding social emotional needs of students, how and when are we going to get the training, collaborate and plan with colleagues in our buildings and across the district? I, I, I really just want to ask the school committee members that have been against early release days, why? The Burlington Educators Association agreed to table the topic of the school calendar and the possibility of early release days in former working group in the fall. In the fall, I am pleading with you to think about the needs of our educators and students. If you say no, if you say no to early release days being built into the school calendar, you are not supporting Burlington teachers, you are not supporting Burlington students. We've addressed your time on learning demands in negotiations, um, by proposing Lexington's 182-day student calendar, but early release days were too much for you to take. It's time for change. The BEA has taken the schedule off the bargaining table in an attempt to settle a fair contract. At the end of last negotiating session on June 6th, the school committee seemed pretty dissatisfied that you weren't getting enough from us after months and months of negotiations. To me, that seems unfair. We're making concessions and compromises and the school committee is not. Please bargain in good faith, please give the Burlington educators a fair contract that we deserve. We take care of your children and grandchildren, take care of us. Please show respect for educators and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is this someone online?
Yeah. Uh, Ruchi Deema.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
All right, so, um, I know that this point has been brought up a lot, so I'm going to try to keep this away. But, um, my name is Ruchi Deema. I am a 10th grader at BHS and I am a part of the BHS music department. So ever since the second grade, when I moved to Burlington, chorus has been an integral part of my life. Since I was in the third grade with, um, Ms. Agati back there in Pine Glen, I was, um, just consumed by chorus. It's been such a massive part of my development and it's really given me like a massive creative outlet where I can actually express myself in like a safe space. It's absolutely amazing. And now, I know that there's been so much change in the music department over the past year, but I feel that Ms. Holmgren has been an absolutely amazing addition to the music department. Um, she's absolutely revitalized the entire community. Um, people, at least, uh, on the chamber singers front, people have been, uh, joining in large groups because they have, uh, seen the great stuff that, um, Ms. Holmgren has to offer. I know that, um, we had 14 people before, um, seven of them left because they were all seniors and now we're back up to 15, um, oncoming in the next school year. And that's absolutely amazing for a program that, um, might have been seen as slipping or declining in numbers, but you can see that we are revitalized, we are gaining a new light. Because of Ms. Holmgren, she has been so supportive and, um, oftentimes, people have felt too intimidated to join chorus and Ms. Holmgren has created such like an amazing environment where we can feel accepted. And I just really feel that making her leave the high school would be such a disservice to all the people currently in, um, her classes. And since there's already been so much uncertainty, we've seen like the negative impacts of not having a clear-cut plan for the music department. And I feel like adding even more switch-ups and, um, things like that to the mix, I feel like it would just be terrible for the future of the music department. Um, so I implore you, um, please don't let Ms. Holmgren go. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is someone in the room? Oh, Mr. Yeo?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I didn't know I was going to speak a second time tonight. Excuse me, but, uh, I think it's either this committee or another. I said I'm here to learn and I'm getting an education, I really am, tonight. Uh, I'm so impressed with the students that have spoken, uh, the parents that have spoken, and, uh, the teachers that have spoken on the music program and the contract. And I want to say something a little different. Uh, just a suggestion to some of these folks, no begging. Please don't beg these people. These people are elected and just as a suggestion, you made a point, uh, Ms. Monaco, about the superintendent makes the decision, but you hire the superintendent.
That's right.
And there's no reason for this issue or any issue under the sun that anybody on this committee can't advocate for a point, an issue, or anything. So I've always said, when people either do something or don't do something, you get a message. So these people came up within two hours. So I'm going to suggest that there's a, a motion by someone on this committee at some point, maybe tonight, that you advocate for what these people are asking you for. Go on the record, roll call, stand up.
I don't think that's necessary.
I think it is necessary.
The superintendent, the superintendent will take, um, everything he's heard under advisement. He'll do a good job.
Okay, I'm going to formally ask that this committee take a stand on these two issues. Take a roll call vote, either yes or no.
I'm sorry.
And, uh, so that's my recommendation and you can, you can take it or not.
You can't do that under public participation.
I'm not, I'm not saying under public participation. But as a citizen, a taxpayer, I am formally, everybody here, you heard what I requested.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I'm, I'll be waiting to see what action you take because you can take action, there's no reason you can't. You've already said that you can advocate and I know you can. So we'll be waiting to see what this committee does.
Alrighty.
Thank you. I appreciate the extra time and, uh, I look forward to more discussion.
Sean, did you want to finish this off because we have a whole meeting to get to? Oh, who is it, Derek?
Uh, good evening, folks. Sean Musselman, um, parent of two children, Memorial School, and also BEA president. And I will be brief because, um, so many of my colleagues have, um, spoken before me. Um, and I recognize that the agenda you have to get to has just about everything to do with contracts, uh, which is, which is why we are here and taking this opportunity to share, uh, in front of the entire board tonight. Um, you've heard from many educators, um, they are always, um, seemingly more passionate and full of fire than I am. I think that that is, um, something that you have probably gotten the, the gist of in our bargaining, uh, sessions. And, you know, they have all come this evening to implore the, uh, school committee um, to, to, to hear and, and really take in earnest what they have to say because we, we recognize that you have an executive session this evening where there will be, um, you know, a time and, and sort of a, a feeling, you know, I can understand, um, around taking that opportunity to sort of maximize, you know, how can we maximize the concessions of our educators in this, in this time, given that we are approaching the final, um, bargaining session of, uh, you know, a contract before it expires and the conclusion of a school year. I just want to speak again, um, and share that the, the proposed package that we shared, um, in our most recent, uh, negotiation is really what the BEA, you know, believes firmly as like the bottom of what it needs um, to, to, uh, ratify a contract and to move forward in these next three years um, as educators of, for our Burlington students. It's a fair and respectful package, those are words, not, um, are, of our description, but the superintendent's. Um, in our negotiation sessions, um, you know, our members have already expressed how much they pour into this community, um, a community that, and again, will mind, longest school year in greatest, greater Boston. Um, and despite much hand-wringing around the time of learning, the numbers point out, uh, is at, if not at the top, near the top of dedicated time on learning in its, in front of our students. And yes, that is in no small part because of, uh, the lack of, uh, our early release time. And, um, you know, as I've, we've already stated, but again, to this entire board before your executive session time, the BEA is committed to working with the school committee in the fall, outside of sort of this hanging, you know, veil of, uh, a contract to really work around, um, bringing the people around the table that need to be a part of the con- bringing the people around the table that need to be a part of the conversations for, you know, moving to Genocotti's words, a schedule and calendar that, you know, can move us into the 21st century. So, again, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your time listening to our members. I thank you for our time listening to our students and community as well. We look forward to continuing the conversation on next Tuesday, and I will not sit around and wait for response. I will now make my way to Barnes &amp; Noble, where I will be purchasing several "Thank You Educator" gift cards for the educators of Sawyer and Carver. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is this someone else online, Bob?
So Jerry has his hand raised.
Jerry? Do we know Jerry?
Hello?
Hi Jerry.
Hi. My name is Jerry Moore, and I'm currently the drum major, one of the drum majors of the BHS marching band. And I would just like to address how important the music department meant for me and how important it could have meant for others, with my own personal experiences. So, I migrated to US when I was fourth grade, and when I got here, literally, no, no one, no zero about language, but music is what really brings me connection with others. Middle school, I was enrolled into band, and that's when I started to get to know more people and become more involved into the actual Burlington, Burlington community. So, with me being able to do that, I think there's many other people out there that is also influenced by the music department. So I do not think cutting off people from music department would be a good influence for the community overall, because, you know, last, during the last, what's it called, last school year, we have a new member, well, new member coming in, and she's also from another country. And because of band, she's able to make many friends, like I was able to, and be contributive to the community. So, yeah, I just would like to hope the committee can reconsider the decision of cutting off the staff on music department. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Glad you're enjoying the music for our members.
So before we move on, I just want to make a comment that the school committee does not choose to negotiate at school committee meetings. We work at the bargaining table, and we have been working very hard to come up with a reasonable, fair contract. There's a lot of give and take in negotiations. We are working very hard to solve what people perceive as problems and to make sure that our students get what they need and to keep our teachers well-paid. So, I hope that because one side of the bargaining table has really done the talking tonight, I hope people realize that there's another side to the story too, and we're working very hard to work with our teachers' union to come up with a good, fair contract. And that's really all I can say. Thank you. Want to say anything?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just on the music conversation, this is not about a commitment to the fine arts or the performing arts. In fact, the orchestra program was started here, growing it up from third graders on up. Clearly, it's a priority of the school committee and a priority of mine. My father was a fine arts director for 38 years for the Wayland Public Schools. It's essential. We are living through during this block of time, a time of declining enrollment, and that means we have fewer students and fewer sections. So also, in this equation, which is really program and enrollment drive staffing, we're also trying to keep everyone employed and everyone whole. So the number of sections that are available for teachers to teach makes a difference in terms of the students taking up. So the groups may be getting larger, and I hope they continue to grow, but we're under 1,000 students at the high school currently, so we're down about 200 students from when I started. There's just fewer classes at the high school. There's fewer homerooms at the elementary school. What we try to do is meet the needs of all the students, keep our class sizes small. We try to do that through attrition, so people who move on, people who retire, maybe make other, other professional choices. So, again, all the sections that are being offered now in terms of course will be offered next year. There's no program reduction. What we may need to do, though, is shift people around, because there may not be a full caseload, a full class load, a full section load for the teacher in that job at the high school, just because there's fewer students, not because the experience is bad, the teacher is wonderful, I'm hearing all of you, and we need to look at that. But if we don't have sections to offer, if we don't have the students to support sections, then we have to think about the staff that are available or potentially reduce that staff from a full-time to, to a part-time job or a shared job, and so we just need to look at that. So, I will go back and carefully look at all the section counts again. This is not about the wonderful teachers who are at the high school. I think they're fantastic. It's not about reducing a music program. We're going to be offering as many classes as we have now. It's just that we are looking at a declining enrollment situation where, again, our high school is currently under 1,000 students, and we are looking at the section counts that we need while maintaining class size. The middle school, in fact, is only about 40 or 45 students difference from the high school currently, because we have a very large seventh grade class that's coming through. So we're looking at class-size balance, and we're really trying to keep everyone who wants to be employed in Burlington, we want to make sure there's a job for them and that they stay. So, I know it's not a simple answer. I wish it was simple. Staffing, when enrollment is increasing, is much easier because we're adding staff. But as we, as we contract as a community, that means the number of, if you have fewer kids in the school district, we need to make sure that the staffing matches the program that we want to deliver. But I'll certainly go back and work with Mr. Sullivan, look at the courses students are signing up for, and make sure that we can meet the expectations. And if we can maintain two full-time music teachers at the high school, I am, again, more than happy to support the teachers who are doing that, doing that job currently. We just need to make sure that we can support the staff, given the enrollment that we currently have. So, Madam Chair, we'll certainly go back and look at the section counts again.
Great.
Can I comment quick? I'll be quick. I'm not going to make a motion or anything like that. Tonight was the first I've heard of this potential. This staffing is certainly not something that the school committee handles directly at all. This is handled by the principals and the superintendent, like Ms. Monaco said. That being said, I think I speak for all of us that we absolutely support growing the music program, increasing the music program, supporting the kids in it. I know there's a progression to want to support the kid, grow the kids' music interest in elementary school through middle school through high school. We loved having the play come here. We had, I loved at graduation when the certain music kids cross the stage, and the music kids, you know, played a little ditty for their friends. So I know it's a community. I want to contain and keep that community, grow it. So I think we all support music program. Learning is not just about sport, I promise. So I think we all support that, and I believe Dr. Conti, when he says that we're not cutting any music programs, and that we'll continue to make sure that everyone's supported and all the teachers are employed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, moving on. Information and reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Thank you for being here, everyone. Jeremy, do you have any subcommittee message for us? Somebody thought that was funny.
Nothing to add. Great reorganization happened, no major changes, nothing further to bring.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? No? Where's the names? Is there anyone online from where's the names?
Nope. Okay. Other announcements? Eric, do you have any announcements?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Learning Equity Thriving Youth Risk Behavior Survey Presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite up our Director of Mental Health, Chrissy Concepcion, and our Director of Health and Physical Education, Amy Doughty. For some background, the, for the school committee is, we've been participating in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey for, I think, over a decade. The last six years, we've been partnering with Leahy Clinic, who has provided the funding to allow us to create a data set, not only across the state, but create a data set across middle-sex league communities, because sometimes the state data set is not a great comparison for us, and so we're looking at that. Chrissy, were you planning on going over the, sort of the, just the results, or were you going to go over the, I don't want to take anything away from what's your presentation. Are you going to go over the survey, sort of the questions, that it has its origins in the CDC, or anything like that?
We weren't, sorry, we weren't going to go over specific questions. We do a little bit of a background of the YRBS.
So I'll let you do the background then, but again, this is a, this is an anonymous survey, and it's administered at the middle and high school level. So I think the results are something we look at. The plan is to, again, our next, our next implementation will be in the spring of 2025. And with that, Chrissy and Amy, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Conti. So as, are we good?
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're going to start by thanking, we certainly did not do all this work. We had a great committee working with us. We had Maya Wilkie at the high school, Bobby Concepcion at the middle school, Emily Minty from the high school, and Marissa Lane from the middle school as well. So we all came together, reviewed sections of the survey, and produced this report. So I'm going to start with just a little overview of the survey. We're going to, yep, so just to make a little closer. I can hear you, but I couldn't. Is that better? Still closer? There we go. Okay. So, overview of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, as Dr. Conti stated, it is, it has its origins with the Centers for Disease Control. So it is a national survey given throughout local communities with state data, local data, and then comparative national data. We have the participation rates here for the high school, we'll get, and the middle school, we'll get to that as we go through. We have results broken out by the middle school and high school. We are going to review current initiatives that we have in place, and then suggestions and recommendations moving forward. So, we have administered the survey longer than, since 2017, but 2017 moving forward, we have partnered with the Middle Sex County to get our comparative data. Just trying to think what's our... Bob, where else? We're good. The purpose of the report is to highlight key middle school and high school, high school findings in the eight domain, in the eight domains. Safety, discrimination, violence-related behaviors and experiences, mental health, substance abuse, sexual behaviors, physical activity and nutrition, and protective factors. The data that's collected is reported and analyzed for all students in Burlington, as well as by grade, by gender identity, by sexual orientation, by race and ethnicity. The report is generated by JSI. Important to note. I'm going to just look up here. In 2023, it was 855 middle school students that participated in the survey. Among those students that participated, 146 were marked as incomplete, so we had a final total sample of 706 students. At the high school, we had 820 students participate, 146 were marked as incomplete or excluded, and so we had a total final sample of 671 students.
Okay. Good evening. So I'm going to go over the MSMS results again from the YRBS of 2023. So we started by looking and breaking this down, similar to kind of what I've done for other surveys for you with glows and grows. One of the subsections is protective factors, so this had questions related to student connectedness to both adults in and outside of the school and peers, participation in extracurricular activities, which was encompassing of sports, clubs, music, many different realms, and sleep. So as you can see, our glows were actually all of our students, and there was no significant difference in positive adult connections in looking at any of the different subgroups. Our sleep hours are higher than our previous survey, so we are making strides in that, and we're actually still lower than middle-sex league, but we're making strides. Areas for growth here in protective factors was that our students who did identify as LGBTQ were less likely to have an adult outside of school to talk to, 48% compared to the 60% of students who identified as heterosexual. The transgendered and diverse students, which is the GGD, gender diverse, were less likely to have a peer to talk to about a problem. As you can see, 67% versus students who did not identify as transgendered or gender diverse were 90 to 84%. And again, our transgendered or gender diverse and our Hispanic, Latina, X students were less likely to be involved in extracurricular activities. When looking at physical activity and nutrition, I didn't break this down by specific questions for you, because I think that's pretty, pretty encompassing. Some of our glows were that 66% of MSMS students engage in 60 or more minutes of physical activity in at least five out of seven days. 60% of our MSMS students eat breakfast, six out of seven days, six to seven days. 59% of our students engage in three hours or plus of screen time, but this is down from 66% last time we administered the survey. So we're seeing our screen time go down. That screen time is noted to be not academic screen time, so this is not taking into account your, the time you're spending on the screen for academic purposes. And overall, 81% of our middle school students reported that they participate in an extracurricular activity. Some areas for grows, our eighth graders in particular, were seen to be less likely to eat breakfast. And again, our transgendered, gender diverse students and our LGBTQ students were less likely to engage in physical activity. Also, were more likely to have three-plus hours of screen time and less likely to eat breakfast. The next subsection was safety, so some glows from there is we are almost below the middle-sex league average on all of our measures when it comes to safety. That is a good thing, meaning that our students feel more safe or engaging in less, less risky behavior. We also saw a decrease and below the middle-sex league average for students who were reporting, writing in a car with someone who has been drinking alcohol. Areas for grows is we did see 5% of our students at MSMS report that they had skipped school because they felt unsafe, either at school or traveling to or from school. Again, I just wanted to note, though, we are still below the middle-sex league average in that. So looking at substance abuse, for our middle school students, the rate of lifetime substance abuse has continued a downward trend since 2017. You can actually, I think the bar graph really demonstrates, the line graph really demonstrates that we've seen a rather significant downward trend in alcohol use and vaping. Sorry. And we are below the middle-sex league and the mass averages in our substance use for our middle school students as well. Just another, another slide demonstrating the variety of substances and the decrease. Again, really, you can see the drastic decrease from 2017 in our students who are engaging in electronic vaping products. Some areas for growth within our substance use is that our lifetime usage rates are higher, again, for our students who identify as LGBTQ plus or transgendered or gender diverse compared to the students who identify as heterosexual, and that's for vaping marijuana prescription drug use or misuse and cigarettes. Another subsection was mental health at MSMS, so these questions focused on students feeling sadness or hopelessness, also discussed self-harm and suicidal ideation. All of our averages are lower than middle-sex league and are lower than pre-COVID on all measures. So making some really positive strides here, actually, our percentage of students who engaged in self-harm behaviors is down by over 50%. So, there's always still room for improvement and growth. So 31 of our stu, 31% of the students at MSMS did report that sometimes their mental health is not good in the last 30 days, and the groups that were in increased risk for this were, again, our students who identified as transgendered or gender diverse, LGBTQ plus students, female students in eighth grade. plus students, female students and eighth grade students in particular. Some analysis also showed us, though, that the students who were reporting this were also more likely to be reporting instances of bullying, less likely to have an adult support system, and less likely to sleep at least eight hours a day. So there's some connections to other relevant areas. Another area that the YRBS looks at is sexual behaviors. For our MSMS students, this included sexual contact and intercourse and sexting. So from our glows, we are below, we are at or below the middle sex league average in most of our measures. I just wanted to note that there is no statewide data comparison for this section of the survey. Areas of growth that we would like to see is, one area of concern is sexting, highest amongst our eighth graders at 15% and higher than the middle sex league average. But there has been a steady decline over the last four years, and actually, if you go to the next slide, Bob, you can see a bit of a graph. So as you can see, in 2021, we were at 18%. We're currently at 8%, but middle sex league average is 1%. And sexting is sent or received a sexual message or nude, a summary nude picture or video electronically, is how they define it. I'm going to pass it back to Amy for our BHS results. Oh, did I, sorry, I'm not, I didn't have the slide in mind. And the last section that we looked at was bullying, so overall, 17, we are right at middle sex league average, with 17% of our middle school students reporting that they feel they've been bullied on school property in the last 12 months, again, right with middle sex league. And electronic bullying, we are, again, right at middle sex league at 8%. This was the first time that this question was asked on our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, so there's no trend data to report, so I can't, I can't give you an indication if we're moving in the right direction or not, although in future years, there'll be trend data to look at as well.
Thank you. So protective factors at Burlington? Sorry, protective factors at Burlington High School. Sleep has improved with each survey going forward from 2017, with 35% of students reporting that they're getting eight hours in 2023 and only 16% in 2017. Adult connectedness has bounced back from our lower rates. The previous two surveys were up to 65% in 2023. And BHS, TGD and LGBTQ students report similar rates of connectedness to at least one adult in school and one peer as their cis genders, cisgender peers, I'm sorry. This is not true for middle sex league as a whole. Protective factors continued. Under the girls, our black students reported the lowest rate of adult and peer connectedness. So you can see there, we broke it down a little bit, if, 47% of our black students report that they have an adult in school compared to 65% overall. 65% that report they have a family adult compared to 84% overall, and 68% report they have a peer in school compared to 88% overall. In our Hispanic and Latinx students are far less likely to participate in extracurricular activities, 67% compared to 86%. A significant number of upperclassmen students report less than the recommended eight hours of sleep. Physical activity and nutrition, overall, 53% of BHS students engage in 60 or more minutes of physical activity in at least five of the last seven days, which is an increase from 45% in the last survey. Overall, 71% of BHS students engaged in three hours of screen time, not doing schoolwork, which is a decrease from last time. Overall, 86% of students at BHS reported that they participated in extracurricular activities. Areas of growth, LGBTQ and Latinx students were less likely to engage in physical activity, and overall, 48% of BHS students ate breakfast at least six of the past seven days. Hispanic and Latino students were significantly less likely to participate in extracurricular activities. BHS safety, we are at or below the ML average for most measures. Car and driver safety has increased, less phone usage while driving was important to note. There's less riding or driving while impaired. Areas of growth, approximately 7% of our students report not wearing their seat belts compared to the ML average of 4%. Approximately 5% of our students skipped school because they felt unsafe traveling to or from school. You can see from the graph here, we're looking at the same trending data from the middle school. BHS students are declining in their substance use. This is lifetime substance use here, and then the next slide is current substance use. So the question is currently is reflected in the past 30 days, lifetime is ever. Lifetime usage rates are higher for LGBTQ students than heterosexual students for all of the substances tracked by the YRBS. Electronic vapor use is more than double for LGBTQ students, 7% for heterosexual students, 3%. I'm sorry, at 7% and 7%, and 3% for heterosexual students. The current marijuana use is also higher for LGBTQ students, which at 6% compared to their heterosexual peers at 4%. Again, just like at the middle school, our averages are lower than they were pre-COVID, so we are making some big strides here. Areas of growth, 47% of high school students report that their mental health was not good sometimes, most of the time, or always in the past 30 days. We listed the groups at risk there. TGD students, LGBTQ students, female students, and grade 11 students had the highest numbers. Again, breaking out the data as we did at the middle school, those reporting depression or suicidal ideation are also more likely to report bullying, less likely to report having an adult support, and less likely to sleep eight hours. So this is the graph that shows that our self-harm rates are down 50%. They're down in both schools, about 50%. Mental health at BHS continued. Our stress and anxiety is impacting more students than depression and sadness, which is important to note. So we had 31% of students report stress and anxiety as higher, and 19% reported depression and sadness. Sexual behaviors at BHS, we are at or below the ML average for most measures. Questions that were asked included sexual contact, ever having sex, using protective barriers, substance use before sex, and sexting. So there's little to no statewide data and very little to no trend data on these questions. So this was a little difficult to give you comparisons. And then bullying, bullying, both on school grounds and electronically, has decreased at BHS since 2017 and is below the ML average.
So we wanted to connect this to some of the current initiatives that are going on, and it's important to note that some of these current initiatives were implemented post this survey. So we're really hopeful that we will see even more growth in the next survey as these have been implemented. So as you've heard a lot from me, we have implemented a social-emotional learning curriculum, Wayfinder in grades K through, pre-K through eight. Why is that related to the YRBS? The curriculum is, is very focused on creating a sense of purpose and belonging and connectedness for students between themselves, with their peers, but also with adults in the building. So we are hoping and looking to see those connectedness scores continue to rise for us in our YRBS data and to see trends that would move as kids move to the middle school and high school. Also, embedded into our SEL curriculum is an anti-bullying curriculum that has been rolled out in grades K through eight, and we did update our bullying prevention and intervention plan that you so graciously approved this fall in 2023. We are looking to increase leadership opportunities next year in our elementary, middle, and high school. That was important to note, and it came out both from our YRBS survey, but also in our discussions with the wellness committee and opportunities for students to have a voice within the community. I want to highlight some of our YRBS data, really pointed to some strides that we've made in mental health. We have worked tirelessly to create partnerships, to be able to support our students with both our internal staff, who do an amazing job every single day, but also with agencies who support us and support families in the community, and they're listed above. And we're looking to continue to expand that. So we just recently had staff trained in the Strong Curriculum, which is supporting the transition of newcomer groups, so to support our students who are migrating and immigrating to Burlington. And we are also, as you heard at a recent school committee meeting, going to be piloting a collaborative care model, and we're also looking to increase tier-two services at our middle school and high school. This year, the district also implemented a district-wide school safety committee. There are representatives from the school committee who sit on that as well, where we have really been focused on talking about school safety, both in a proactive manner, but also in the unfortunate event, if there was an unfortunate event, in a reactive manner. And we've been working to get school staff trained in C-STAG, which is the Comprehensive Threat Assessment Guidelines, to be able to address school safety issues using an evidence-based measure. So I can say that there are at least two members of every single crisis team across the district and every single school trained in the C-STAG, and we're looking to continue to enhance that. Future steps will be, hopefully, a school safety night. I know Ms. Masato is working with, possibly partnering with the PTO to offer a school safety night in collaboration with the Burlington Police Department. They are huge supporters and collaborators with us here in the district and sit on our district-wide safety, school, school safety committee as well. And we are looking to do a Lunch and Learn series next year, which would be a virtual offering, but we are doing one on school, on safety, more related to internet safety for parents as well. Oh, you skipped two, you skipped two quick. I'm going to let Amy speak about in our classrooms, because it really does focus on the health curriculum.
So in our health curriculum, we've been using the results of the YRBS to reevaluate what we do since we started giving the YRBS. So each year, when we get the results, we go back and we look at areas of growth that we can focus on. Once the data is public, we share that with our students, and we present that in a positive way. 92% of our students are not doing this. So we build, we build that into our curriculum, and then we also partner with the Burlington Police in our classrooms, at the middle school and at the high school. We partner with Burlington Youth and Family Services at the high school, the NAN Project, which is a nonprofit based out of Bedford, and we, this year, for the first time, we've had the Middle Sex District Attorney's Office in for, they did a digital literacy, internet safety lesson at the high school. So suggestions and recommendations? Do you want to do the middle?
Sure. Yeah. So these, these are pretty consistent, slide to slide, from MSMS and BHS, but based on the committee and looking at the, all of the data points, we're going to be working on focusing on healthy habits for grade seven onwards in regards to sleep, eating, and physical activity. We'd like to enhance opportunities for student voice and leadership to promote a sense of belonging and inclusion within our school, so we are talking with principals right now about opportunities to enhance leadership, starting even in our elementary schools, but moving into our middle school and high school, so we are excited about that. We want to work to ensure that all student activities, sports, clubs, music, classrooms, are inclusive and welcoming. Amy and I had the opportunity to speak with a consultant from Safe and Inclusive Schools about steps to take to promote that and to, to ensure that all of our students have a sense of belonging, so we are working closely with them to, to develop appropriate programming. And we're going to work closely with the lead DEI instructional coach and our new family and community engagement liaison to build school and community supports for the populations identified as at-risk. I'm just taking a quick look. I don't think there's anything different that we're going to do at the high school. I think everything we're doing, we're doing together at both schools. Any questions? Ms. Bond?
Well, that was interesting. Questions?
The 86% participation rate is awesome. I know plenty of people strive for like 30% participation rate for surveys. Can you just talk to me about how, like, how it's promoted? Do kids take it seriously, just kind of the feel around it?
So I'm going to start with, I wasn't in this position when we administered the YRBS. My recollection is, we, at the high school at least, we administer it during a flex block or an advisory block. There is a provided spiel that goes with it to introduce the survey. The kids are seated, they have the allotted time, they're not distracted, they complete their survey in that allotment.
May I just add some of that, Ms. Masato? We, I think, six or seven years ago, when we created the, sort of, the middle sex group, we went from a paper-based survey to a digital survey, so it allowed us to do sort of a better job with the data, clearly, but I also think we had much more participation. It was just much more convenient to, to monitor.
Catherine?
Again, I noticed in a couple of the slides that there's a group that Hispanics, who don't seem to be participating as many after-school activities. And again, I guess I'm trying to say how hard, how were you able to dig into the why? Is it because they don't feel welcome, or they have trouble getting, you know, rides to and from? You know, were you able to dig into that a little bit deeper? Because I know in the past, even, you know, with general student population, when we had started the transportation or the committee with, you know, Melissa, some of the stuff we looked into is kids not having a way to get a ride home from activities they may have wanted to participate in. So I just don't know how you were able to dig into it a little deeper.
We haven't dug into it deeper, but I think all the points that you bring up, I think we could, we absolutely could, offer a opportunity for, to meet with those students, to ask some of those specific questions, the barriers to participating. I'm imagining, maybe as many of, of the people on this committee, that there are, it's not one specific barrier, that there are maybe multiple barriers. I think we've, we do a lot of work to support, but that is an area that we need to figure out, if there is something that is, is something we could address to help promote their participation in extracurricular activities, whether it's changing the climate of the activities or reducing barriers such as transportation or the timing, late buses, things like that. I think we can absolutely look into that as well.
And again, Madam Chair, I think one wonderful thing this community does is not charge families' fees for participation in sports teams or performing arts. And I think oftentimes, people make a financial argument, but I think the stronger argument is the risk behaviors, that participation in these activities help the students avoid or make better choices with. So I do think, while certainly generous, and there is a cost, I think the, the savings over time are very impactful in terms of training the kids and getting them exposure and having them work on teams and making sure that they're making good decisions.
Jeremy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, my question was along root cause analysis for grow trends, if there's any commonality, so get focused resources, maybe tackle some of the challenges in a more meaningful way, and then also the correlation to the data for the growth in anxiety to any of those categories for grows that, you know, show commonality across the groups.
I missed the first part of it.
I'm going to try to answer this, but...
Jeremy, could you, could you, like, simplify that question a little?
Yeah, sure. So is there a root cause analysis been done for our grows? And is there any trend data shows commonality across our populations that are showing needs for growth? You know, maybe so we could focus some resources at two or three common challenges.
So I don't think we've, with the chair, I don't think we've done any root cause analysis. I do think we are at a point where we have some identified...
We have some identified subgroups that we could do that. I think it's also important to note that some of the subgroups that are identified in the YRBS match some of our subgroups that were identified in our school climate survey. So we are working to try to figure out exactly how to support those students, but to your point, Mr. Brooks, we haven't done a formal, like, root cause analysis, but I think in order to make specific steps, we, we could do that, and if that's something that the committee is interested in us conducting and Dr. Conti's interested in us doing, we could, we can do that work to get some more specific information from, from those groups.
I mean, just to speak for myself, I think it helps me make decisions when we, you know, go to focus resources in a budgeting cycle, to make those decisions. We're going to put dollars to it, and I know it's, you know, not fair to put a dollar value on it, but, you know, making those hard challenges and figure out where we need to put the resources.
to put the resources.
Very good. Thank you. I had a similar question. I noticed that there was an increased strain.
A strain on mental health while being in grade eleven, and I'm wondering if you have a, an idea of what might be behind that or, you know, how we're able to, you know, is this a common year over year? Is this something that you think is very specific to this cohort? I'm interested in, similarly to Jeremy, in how we can, we can support this, this group and.
Calculus.
AP Physics.
Exactly.
So we worked, as I said, Emily Minty was with us. Emily's one of our counselors at the high school, and she does an excellent job. So we sat and we talked about it a little bit, and I think exactly to your point, Ms. Monaco, is that I, there's a tremendous amount of pressure intrinsically at home, wherever it comes from, on our students to do well in that junior year. Somehow it becomes so much more important than any other year they've ever experienced. That I think that's, that's our root cause, inadequate root cause analysis, you know, our surface level analysis of, of what we see, what Emily sees, and just being at the high school, you see it. So that's what I would say.
And I would concur. I don't have any formal data, although I'm sure there has been research into this, but in working in the high school, I can tell you that eleventh grade is a really challenging year. It is when the thought of your post-secondary options really start to come into focus. There's a lot of college and career exploration classes. That is your last round of grades that could possibly be showing on your transcript. So there's a lot of pressure on those kids, and that, that does seem to, to be a year that is, is very difficult for students.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I also want to thank you both for the work that you've done. You know, I'm glad to see the numbers generally trending in the right direction. There seem to be some spaces where, of course, there's always going to be room for improvement, you know, as we evolve, but thank you very much for the work that you're doing. It's important.
Catherine.
No, I was going to ask the same similar question for the seventh grade numbers for the females who are feeling, again, I remember what middle school, you know, it was junior high when I was in school, but I just, I don't know. I think that's just a part of that age group maybe, but it'd be interesting to dig a little bit deeper and, and see what the pressure is for, you know, the females in that age category that they're feeling the way that they are.
So I just have two, two points that I wanted to make. One is that several years ago, it was a year that one of my grandsons was at the high school, and he, he really didn't take the survey too seriously. And I think a lot of his friends didn't either. And when I asked him why, you know, I kind of gave him the look, this is important, you know, don't screw it up. And he, he said, well, we really don't have enough time. He said, it's done in some morning block that isn't long enough. And so I'm assuming that's all changed and that this is a more serious, like the kids that took this one were more serious than the ones, than the group that was a few years back.
I'm going to hope right along with you that they took it as, as serious as we could. I think the more we repeat the process, the more our students see that we, that we mean business, that it is important. The more we talk about it in our classrooms, the more we bring in outside sources to support the areas of need, I think that meaningful piece is evident to the students. I do. They do have more time. As I said, we use our flex block or our advisory block. I'm not sure how it was utilized in 2023. This year, we will find the longest block of time that we can provide for them. Again, I'm new at the administration process, so we'll figure this out.
Well, it was something at the time that I mentioned because this is an important survey and, and the results of it are important. And I think to make sure that the kids understand the importance and have the time to do it right really matters. So I'm, I'm sort of assuming that all of that changed and that this one is a lot more meaningful. The other thing that I, I wanted to mention is it's pretty clear which groups are having some difficulty based on everything you presented. And I guess it's incumbent upon us to help them out to the extent possible. The juniors, junior year is, I mean, like, some of these kids are taking five AP courses their junior year. It's really tough. So it's pretty understandable they're feeling a lot of pressure. And the certain group of them maybe aggressively is trying to do well to get into certain schools, et cetera. But all in all, it's a great project. It's a great survey. You clearly had good results. You know, they've gotten better over, over time.
For sure.
So thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you. I just want to follow up real quick to it. Our groups, our subgroups that were identified as needing additional supports are not unique to Burlington.
No.
And that's, that's important for everybody to understand. That's, we don't have the ML comparative data in a lot of it, but it is, it's pretty well-known that our subgroups that need support, need support across the nation.
Correct. Eric.
Just Madam Chair, just to back to Mr. Brooks's point and Ms. Novak, it's really hard to develop causal relationships to this data. I think we can mostly look at maybe data that's correlated. So, and having been here for a while, we changed the high school start time to later, so we would expect to see more students getting better sleep. Is that causal? I, I can't say, but we certainly talked a whole lot about the importance of sleep and why we were making that change. Amy, the, we did without a ninth grade health teacher for a year or two, and I think this committee, three years ago maybe, added back in the ninth grade health teacher. So I think our students are getting more exposure to health topics, health curriculum. And again, I can't say there's a causal relationship to some of the trends moving in the right direction, but if we were adding staff and program and we were moving in the wrong direction, then I think that would also sort of be, be an indicator. So I do think we need to maybe follow up with some focus groups, ask questions. I think we all, again, Ms. Concepcion mentioned, we are doing an annual school climate survey, which has some connections here. Chrissy, we also do some individual screenings for students that are also state required that deal with anxiety and sort of mental health, really trying to be as proactive, proactive as we can. And I know, Amy, that the physical education that we all sort of remember that we experienced is much different now, and you're trying to embed more lifelong skills in terms of physical activity, health, nutrition, and again, hopefully students are incorporating some of those. But it's, I'm not sure I can necessarily say if you pull this lever, you get this results, because that's not how kids behave, but we should certainly see the, the change. And again, Ms. Monaco, you were here when we, I think, first did the YRBS fifteen years ago, and it was all about anti-smoking was sort of the, the focus. And we've come such a long way from, from the anti-smoking days, but we're also seeing a trend where kids are, they don't seem to be taking as many risks with substances, but we need to make sure now they feel part of a community is maybe where they're experiencing, they're experiencing risk. So again, we'll continue to look at it. Again, this coming, spring of '25 will be the next administration. You go through the results with the wellness committee as well, so there are parents who are part of those conversations. And again, ultimately, the advisories that was added to the high school schedule are meant to address these type of, these type of concerns. So there's no doubt our students are being exposed to adult issues in the world much sooner than, than any of us would appreciate or like, but we have to give them the tools to be able to, to deal with that. So again, Amy, the program is, is developing, again, pre-K through 12, which is great. And again, Chrissy, the sort of the coherence that you've put to some of this work, I think everyone was working really hard before, sort of in their own silo, and I think looking at it more from a district perspective has, I think, really improved the student experience. So again, thank you both. Ms. Chicalini really wanted to make sure that I said if there's no more questions, that they can go home. So she's, so she's, she's texting me, so, so I always want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. So thank you both very much.
Time to go home.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the custodial memorandum of agreement for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Would you like to tell us a little bit about it or just vote or how do you want to do this?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like actually the folks who did the work to talk a little bit about it. You have some background in your packet. Bob and Nicole put in a lot of time, so I'm not sure if you want to comment on it. And Bob, this has been ratified by the custodians group, and we're waiting for the school committee to follow.
Yeah, that is correct. Again, I want to thank obviously Nicole Caush, Ms. Caush, and the custodial union. I think the conversations were both very friendly, but also very professional. I believe we had three meetings, and I think that we were in agreement very quickly. So I think that what's before you tonight definitely falls in line with what we're seeing, you know, across other communities. I think the staff here is great, and we do treat them very well. So there's not really a lot of working conditions. This is really just a financial package that's in front of you. So again, I just want to thank them for working with us during the negotiations, and thank Ms. Caush as well, too, for getting us to what's in front of you tonight.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one procedure. I don't want this to hold it up, and my understanding is you can kind of change grammar type of things in the process of a contract, but any way we could change lead man?
So again, I think what's ratified, or what has been ratified in front of you is what was brought before the, the union. I think that if it's an insignificant change that we may not have to negotiate, so it's definitely something that I could bring back to the union for question. I also think there's an opportunity for us to further this conversation in either a side letter, should the union see fit. So it's definitely something that we can readdress and see if we can accept it as is.
Again, Madam, Madam Chair, Ms. Masato, would, just would the change to lead be satisfactory?
Yeah, lead person, lead, any of that. Lead person, lead, yeah. I mean, what, any, I think it's just a word, it's not changing any meaning of the, except the, yeah, the name of the, like, position, I think, right?
Yep. I think we can bring that to the union. Again, I think they'd be fine. I think everyone abbreviates it as lead anyway, so I think it shouldn't be an issue. I just wanted to make sure that, that change would be acceptable to you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll put this to a vote. Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's unanimous. And next we have the cafeteria MOA for the same timeframe, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. Discussion and vote?
Again, I'd like to say the same thanks for the professional conversations, quickly coming to agreement, not only with their proposals to us, also our reception of their proposals, and again, the conversations that we had. Ms. Caush, obviously for working through this with myself. And like I said, I think there is more of a financial package in front of you and less of a work and changes condition. And I can't thank the cafeteria staff enough for being flexible with us. As you're all aware, we did change to a food services company as well, too. So there has been some small changes, and they have been willing to continue to work with us. So I do want to appreciate their efforts, and again, hopefully you all will agree to the MOA in front of you.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the cafeteria MOA as described earlier. Is there any discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, put it to a vote, Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's also unanimous. Okay, moving on, journey to cares. Lisa gets her voice ready to go ninety miles an hour.
No, I just, I just want to make sure that, yes, I think Rosemary has told me on the side that she's putting me on a timer.
Uh huh. And is there an upper limit?
All right. So again, very excited to talk about this journey to cares. In this picture, and we'll be talking about it, are some of the culminating events that happened, and we'll be mentioning it, including our sport events, our book awards, and some awards that students have received. Next, please. In this particular section here were the sports event night awards. We also have the district safety wide team. And also, we see a school committee member, Jeremy Brooks, also assisting in the sports nights and graduation, of course. And then the grade five event in which all the students came together to do some sports and activities. Next, please. We have some more pictures of graduation and also the book awards, and also the graduation of our Simon Youth Academy and our alternative education programming. Next, please. We have some pictures here of some cultural night events, and thank you to a school committee member, Melissa Masara, also for attending, and also our happy fortieth anniversary of the Science Center, and also our devil bots, and receiving some, also a picture of getting some professional development in vector. Next, again, are some pictures of some cultural night events, also our work with digital literacy and computer science. And also there in the far left corner are just middle school teachers in listening to some of our finalists for the middle school principal search. Next, please. We have pictures of folks attending a multilingual learner conference and students learning and reading and enjoying themselves. Next is the work that's being done of the kindness month that was hosted, and our work with our director of family and community engagement, in which Joyce Delianis is providing us with some fabulous gifts for our students and families, and kindness bingo, and also a look of our BPS educator exploration series. Next, please, is we have the work of our science educators, and we'll be talking about that momentarily. And so, thank you. Moving on, please. All right, so to summarize, the instructional team met with Rabbi Susan Aber, Aberzam. We met with the director of English Learner Education, Support Ed, to finalize the report on the analysis of the L-programming at BPS. Next, please. As you saw in the pictures, participation in district-wide grade five track meet for all four elementary schools. This had occurred for the first time. Want to thank Amy Doty for her hard work in putting this together. Again, as you saw in the pictures, we've begun the finalist interviews. We have four candidates that we're bringing on board. Want to thank the review committee, members of school committee for participating and part of that review committee, and just some really exciting times for who will become our new principal for the middle school. Next, please. Participate in the BHS Scholarship Awards Night, the preschool promotion ceremony. Again, meeting with literacy consultant, Dr. Gail Lovett. I'm finalizing some of the survey questions. Met with a math consultant, Dr. Kateri Thunder. I'm finalizing the math analysis report that everyone should be getting in about three to four weeks. Met with Dr. John Almerod on finalizing professional development for administrators. Next, please. Met with the high school department chair and finalizing the process, the letters to parents and students who took the Opt-Out Algebra I exam, or it's who took the Opt-Out Algebra I exam, or it's a particular task to see how students would be able to do if they decided to skip Algebra I. Attended the Devil Bots meeting, attended the BHS Junior Book Awards, and, again, want to thank school committee members for their attendance to that event. And also attended the BHS graduation for seniors and the Simon Youth Academy graduation. Next, please. Attended the final Everdino show at Francis Wyman. Learned about the TikTok. It goes talk, 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 talk. Finalizing the professional development calendar and planning professional development for the following year. Met with the leadership of the Student David Privacy Consortium to discuss updates and challenges of data privacy and application security. Really want to thank Rob Emiliano for her hard work in that. Also, want to thank, also, a lot of work has been going on when it comes to Spire Olympics and the Gran Turmicio activities. The digital learning coach, Ms. Schaefer, worked with Fox Hill third grade students and teachers on the development of a famous patriot Cana magazine project. Also, really wanted to thank, again, Ms. Schaefer collaborating with Ms. Small and the entire fourth grade at Pine Glen on the development of a Canva poster for an immigration project. Next, please. The reading specialists held their meeting on May 31. Again, data assessment and upload meetings in the week of June 10. And our lead literacy coach met with the Corefy Consultant to discuss Lexia Crossworks for foundations, Haggerty curriculum lessons, and mapping. Next, please. Again, a lot of great work in which the Director of Family and Community Engagement attended the Helpless Community fundraiser, continuing to build relationships with community partners, working to support families in need. Next, please. Worked with the Director of Communications to connect families to school and to the larger community resources, as well as to increase access to Parent Square platform. Talked about the K-35 Universal Math Assessments. That is our lead math coach, and prepared summer math activities for students. Next, please. Again, as you heard today from our Director of Mental Health, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey was conducted. Also, our nursing staff has worked with the Director of Health and Wellness. And the kindergartners wrapped up the year-long weather investigation with an engineering project, the Popsicle Challenge, and that is from our science folks. Also, as you saw in the pictures, next, please. The first grade did a tide pool field trips connecting with animal parts and function units. You also saw pictures of Luna Moths, painted lady butterflies hatching for grades kindergarten, three, and four. And also, immigration units at grade four wrapped up with student visits from BHS South Asian Students Associations and African American Students Associations to share the cultural traditions and way of their family honors of their cultural roots as Americans today. And, again, a special thanks to BHS Club Advisor Jennifer Bromby and the educators at Pine Glen and Francis Wyman for coordinating this special event. Next, please. The compost lesson for fifth graders in connection with the ecosystem unit. And also, as you saw in the picture, the Science Academy celebrated their 40th anniversary. And also, for special education, we are beginning initial conversations of expanding specialized programming to other elementary schools for not this year, but for the year 2025 and 2026, special education folks. And also wanted to thank, also, Eric "Dr. Conti" for attending the lab collaborative graduation for, in which we had three graduates. Next, please. Also have been working on the SIMS data collection for DESI, which was due on July 5. Continued working with Vector Solutions to approve educator evaluations. And finally, worked with elementary principals, again, planning for next year's school schedules, and worked with elementary principals in looking at the MCAS testing. Next, in the business and finance team, there's a lot of work done. Nicole Caushia met with the Director of Family and Community Engagement to plan expenditures for homeless grant funds to help meet the needs of the population, participated in negotiations with the following bargain units, Unit A, Unit D, clerical, cafeteria, custodian, and posted the fiscal '25 operating budget immunis. Next, please. Just some highlights. Met with the Sprouts Director Review Program Revenue and Expense Projections for next year, and also Nicole Caushia and her team attended state training on Circuit Breaker Extraordinary Relief Reimbursement. And finally, as she's done quite a bit, filed the MSBA Pro Pay reimbursement claims for Fox Hill Project and worked on gathering information for multiple FOIA requests. And in communication, as you can see, next, there are some pictures in which Lauren Angelo has been doing a lot of great work. Next, please. This is also her art show that she does as well, too. So, this will now be focusing on the written pieces, please. Next. Again, collaborated with the Francis Wyman Special Education Programs to showcase the annual emotions through art, student art show. Art is created with a focus on social emotional learning, student self-expression and self-reflection. The students worked so hard and were extremely excited to show their families, classmates, and teachers all of their amazing work. The communications team headed by Lauren Angelo also added the special education manual to the district website to meet the accessibility requirements, worked with the Student Information Office and the BHS Register, and updated registration packets online to support multiple languages. She worked with the Athletic Department to share and promote summer strengths and conditioning program on Parent Square. Next, please. Worked with the BHS Marching Band Director to help connect, contact rising eighth and ninth graders to participate in upcoming marching band activities. Next, please. Met with the Director of Community Family Engagement and also Burlington Rec Department to discuss and collaborate summer programming for students. Also worked with the Pine Glen Counselor to create a school-wide PBS poster for students in classrooms. Next, as you can see, our directors also participate in many school events as well, too. In these events, she has participated in the May Town Meeting, participated in the annual review for the health insurance offerings for the town and union representatives. Next, please. She launched the annual Points to Wellness Program for employees. She joined Ms. Nichols and Ms. Rebelles Francis Wyman Grade Five Running Club before a school run. And what's very interesting about that is they have a running club, and these students meet in the morning, early in the morning, to run with teachers as well, too. Director attended the MSS Orchestra Concert and also the Choral Concert as well, too. Next, please. Along with the nursing team, they prepped the end of the school year's state data reporting, ordered stocked medical supplies for the '25 school year, planned and collaborated with the Burlington Fire Department on CPR and Stop the Bleed training for staff during the scheduled professional development for next year. Next, please. Vector Medical Training and Education updated for '25 school year. AED Biannual Testing and Service booked for mid-June. Next, please. As you can see, our Director of Operations, Bob Kuna, also participates in school events as well, too. Further, he has attended and presented warrant articles at Town Meeting, met with the clerical, cafeteria, and custodians to negotiate contracts. He has attended multiple, next, please, BHS and Francis Fox Hill Building Committee meetings. He met with the eighth grade students to discuss their civics projects and participated in Ms. Volpe's middle school class presentation on bus stop safety, and he's coordinated with the maintenance for summer project schedules. Next, please. He has also worked with NEAL with asbestos training and gender maintenance performance performed at the middle school. He chaperoned the middle school chorus trip in which they performed at Chukapi High, and then they went to Six Flags. And that's what the pictures showcase. Next, please. And the technology team. They've supported students and staff via help desk tickets. They finalized device orders for summer replacements, and they supported new and existing MCAS testing at all schools. Next, please. Thank you. And this is just a wonderful picture of the graduation event. It was my first ever here in Burlington. It was very well done, and just the students are so happy, and I enjoyed just seeing all of them graduate and just the smiles on their faces. So, there's just a lot of great work that's occurring right now in Burlington public schools, and just very happy to be a part of it. And just want to really thank the school committee for their participation and their support, and Dr. Conti for his vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any, anyone have comments or questions? No? Good job, Lisa. It was a pleasure to sit next to you at graduation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, that was a lot of information.
Again, Madam Chair, the cares are posted to the website. If anyone wants to go through at a slower pace, they can certainly go through and look at the pictures and review. I think the bottom line is we have a lot of great educators and other staff just doing a tremendous amount of work on behalf of Burlington children, so.
All right. Next item, educ, what's this? Educacious? Is that a typo?
It, it, it's the, I'm not sure the agenda version you have. It's stipend adjustment for the BHS grading coordinator?
Yeah, there's just, there's a. Oh, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the.
Stipend adjustment.
When we, when we moved Mr. Murphy from the Student Information Office to Middle School Associate Principal, again, he has since moved on to be Principal of Melrose Middle School, we took some of his responsibilities and divvied them up. The grading coordinator responsibility went to high school principal's lead assistant. We haven't changed that amount for a very long time, so Principal Sullivan asked that we change the high school principal, again, lead assessment, lead assistant for the grading coordinator. And, again, I have the correct dollar amount in my packet, I think it was changed, and that is my fault, to $3,433.50.
Three, four, three, three, fifty?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you don't think that's. When it comes to money, please listen to Nicole. Go ahead, Nicole.
What's the correct number?
$3,605.
605?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's have a motion, and then we can talk about it. Someone want to move that we increase the education, the stipend adjustment for the BHS grading coordinator to $3,605?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is that increase to or an increase of? Two? Okay. Then I said it right. So, is there any questions? Any discussion about this?
What was it, again? It was multiple stipends? Now we're consolidating it into one position?
It was, it was a set position that we moved the position and then divided up some of the responsibilities of that position.
Okay.
So, we didn't backfill the position, but this is over and above what the high school principal's lead clerical person does. So, we've created a stipend to have her fulfill this task.
How much of an increase is it?
It's from $2,500, so it's $1,000 plus, plus a 3%.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll put this to a vote. Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And that is unanimous. Next item on our agenda, facilities and finance. Finance report update.
Madam Chair, pass it over to Nicole.
Thanks. So, all of our capital articles and revolving funds are in good standing. There was a little bit of a change from the prior month to our remaining balance in our operating budget, which was just a result of closing out some coverage for the year that ended up coming in a little bit lower. I think some of it was due to some coverage at the high school that instead of filling with a sub, we covered with additional sections, which came in a little bit of a lower cost.
So, again, if a teacher think of a seven-period day, a teacher typically teaches five sections, has a prep period, and then a duty period. If they choose to teach a sixth section, then we can remove the duty. And sometimes, if a teacher leaves or requires some shifting, or we have more students enroll or need to expand a section at the high school, then the contract allows for us to, again, with the teacher's agreement, expand her teaching responsibilities and cover that section. So, it, we don't have to hire another full-time teacher to, to fill in that vacancy.
Okay. Are there any questions about the finance report?
I, oh, I just had one question. I know there are revolving accounts, but is there a reason that the balance in the Francis Wyman after-school program is so much larger than the balance in the other programs?
I think that there's just some timing differences of when they're collecting funds right now for, for clubs and stuff that are going to be running.
Okay, because the, most of them start off in the kind of four-digit range, and Francis Wyman is consistently in the six-digit range. I know it's a slightly bigger program, but, like, Pine Glen was like $5,000, and Francis Wyman's $320,000.
Are you talking about the homework?
Elementary after-school, Pine Glen, Fox Hill after-school, after-school at Francis Wyman. They're all labeled quite slightly different, but I think they're apples to apples.
I can get you, like, a summary of what programs and stuff run through those.
Okay.
Again, through the chair, Nicole, just checked. Francis Wyman was the sort of first and only after-school program for a long time. We've added all the other locations. I'm not sure if that was.
Well, that's what I'm kind of getting at, if there's consistently hundreds of thousands in there, do we move it out?
It kind of doesn't make sense to have that kind of money in that account, so maybe you could look into it and let us know.
Again, I, I think there would be some rules to that. I think, like, the CAF, we would want to make sure we could carry three or four months of payroll, and that might be the payroll for more than just Francis Wyman, so let's, let's look at what's in that account. And I think we also draw down on that account for, for in-kind services on the building. Isn't that, we do that for our after-school programming?
Not really.
Not really? Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the finance report? Okay.
Again, my one question, Madam Chair, is are we in good standing for year end?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Moving on. Marshall Simon's Field Project. So, I understand that what you want to do here, Eric, is create a group that will work on it?
Again, Madam Chair, the, what we created before you was the process that we used for the varsity field, which was a significant investment at the time. I think it was 2009 from Town Meeting. And so, we wanted just to create a, for clarity, a separate charge. And, again, that would be empowered by this school committee. I just wanted to be clear that this is a school committee project, so all sort of decisions would be recommended by that to the, to the full committee. Again, I don't need to read all of this, but would like the middle school field renovation committee to create it as an advisory committee, again, to the school committee. They would work with stakeholders. They would have public meetings. They would work with the design team. They would make sure different perspectives are included in the project design and concept plan. They would sort of set some rules and bring that, those designs and recommendation to the, to the school committee. If you want to think about it like a mini sort of building project, it's just, it is a significant investment, and we want to make sure there's a structure to it, so people don't feel like, feel like they can have access to the conversations that are happening and move forward. So, again, you can certainly read this, and we were working on it late, which is why it was at your desk. Again, would charge the middle school field renovation committee at a minimum, would create a program description for the field complex, create the field layout, including type size, location, and use of activity. type size, location, and use of activities, how the plan will align with our overall field vision, and also including certainly Park and Rec, U-Sports, and our high school sports. We'd also need to get bids and talk about the cost of that, if we have to make any adjustments, make some other, we used to call it value engineering, now what do we call it? Man, managed engineer, something or other, what do we call it?
Value.
Value engineering, they use another term at Fox Hill. And again, so what we're looking for is a committee of thirteen voting members. And again, they would be appointed by the school committee, and the recommended members would be following. Again, would be obviously the principal of the middle school, maximum of two school committee members. That's a bit of a deviation from all of you participating, but I would implore you that you all don't need to participate, because that requires a whole different level of posting and, and everything else. And I think this committee needs to be a little bit more nimble than that. Obviously, I would sit on it. Bob, Director of Operations, Athletic Director, Director of Park and Recreation, and then Recreation Commission Member, a community member, youth program representatives would be there. Lot of talk from some of the youth programs at town meeting, a middle school parent, a middle school faculty, coach, maybe from even the PE department who would be using the, those facilities, member of Ways and Means if they so chose to participate. And again, like to have a couple of student athletes and middle school athletes participate. And again, I just want to stress that procurement decisions will be guided and overseen by our school district manager, by Nicole. She is our procurement officer for the, for the district and would sort of be involved, but not necessarily need to attend all the meetings. And, and again, I sort of created some of the same language we used for varsity field in terms of people's ability to meet and sort of the perspective they bring. And again, I would like to have the school committee designate a chair. And again, my recommendation, because Jeremy sits on the Park and Rec Committee already, would have Jeremy chair the Middle School Field, this, this committee, Field Renovation Project. He's obviously, has been committed to the project from the very beginning and works closely with Park and Rec, and I believe this field is going to be utilized as much or more by the community as it will be for, for high school sports. And so, again, would ask the committee to, again, if he's willing, to have, ask Mr. Brooks to chair this, this committee. Again, and meetings would be held as needed, but we said basically once a month for people who want to do that. I also want to make sure that all meetings will be open work sessions, that they're going to be public meetings, they will be posted, so people will know when they're happening, and people can attend, listen, observe. And again, the chair, if it's Mr. Brooks, can certainly invite their input and sort of manage the, manage the meeting. And again, they would take recommendations to the, to this committee to, again, move forward with the, with the project. So, again, the, the point is it's a significant investment by town. We had good luck putting a group together that included community representation, school representation, teacher, coach, and student when we did varsity field, and would like to sort of, my recommendation would be to follow that process moving forward, and you would all get regular updates on where we are.
All right. Megan indicated she'd like to work with Jeremy on this, if, if no one objects. Jeremy, I'm assuming you want to be the chair on this field committee?
Yes, I'm sure that's correct.
Okay, good. Now, how about, I mean, obviously, some of the people on the committee, you know, there's only one superintendent, and what about the rest, though? How are we going to go about choosing the rec commission member, the community member, the Burlington middle school parent, et cetera? Do you want to do that?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I can give that outreach and then get back to you with a suggested committee update. We can vote on it on the next meeting if that works for everyone.
Yes, Eric, can you like somehow make it known to people so we have multiple, you know, we might have to pull names out of a hat or something, but-
Sure. Again, if the committee approves this charge in this process, then we can certainly ask for people that we are putting together a committee to look at the middle school chaired by Mr. Brooks. If you have interest, please contact us at this particular time with your interest and availability, and then we can select from, from that group.
Okay, so why don't we take a vote to create this committee with Jeremy as the chair and with Megan as the second school committee member? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jev O'Ty. It's unanimous. Committee's created. Good luck, guys. Let us know at the next meeting who we're putting on it. Ready to move on? Everybody good with that? Eric?
Yes, ma'am.
Set?
Yes.
Okay. Fox Hill Building Committee update. Melissa?
We have a community meeting, I'm losing track of the dates, tomorrow at seven. It's virtual, it is on the town calendar, and many, I got emails, voicemails, parent square alerts, so I may hope we reached everyone. But we'll be broadcasting, it'll be recorded. If you miss it, you can watch it at home later. That's only up, you'll get your update tomorrow.
What's it going to be like?
For all of us, I think it's going to be absolutely nothing that we haven't seen, right? So, the concepts, basically the kind of the pamphlet we put out at town meeting and the poster, some of those graphics, the massing study, some of the images of the inside, where we are, how far we've come, you know, where the MSBA milestones, and then kind of the next steps in terms of dates of, you know, we're going to approve it in a couple of weeks, August, MSBA will hopefully approve it, September will ask for the money. Move-in date would be some point in 2028, so there's a timeline there. But it's, it's all the same presentations that we've already seen.
And through the chair, again, the feasibility process through the Massachusetts School Building Authority is much different than the feasibility process in maybe other community projects. So, there are, the design is about fifty percent along. There are, again, as Ms. Masardo said, there are sort of concepts of what the building will look like, the classrooms are all laid out. We've even had several cost estimates on what the price would be to, to construct the building, where it's placed on the site, what the circulation would be. And all of this has been put together with countless meetings of other community groups, including the planning board, including conservation, including public safety, and obviously, the educators were very involved with the inside, inside design of the, the building as well. So, I think it's a great opportunity for the community to see the result of all the many hours of work and the cost that's being projected for this building. It will be a community asset for the next fifty, sixty years. And again, we would encourage people to attend just to see the progress. Once approved by MSBA in August, again, they are our partner in this project, they'll be funding a significant chunk of it along with the community, then our expectation is the project itself with the request for funding from the community will be presented at town meeting in September. So, this is really going to be an opportunity tomorrow night for the community to see what we'll be presenting to town meeting in September.
Any other discussion? I just want to make a couple of points. One is the, the meeting on the eighteenth is canceled, right? So-
It should have been, yeah, cancellation.
Yeah, I got a notice. I just wanted, in case anyone thought there was a meeting on the eighteenth. And then, the other thing, I had seen some comments about the high cost, and I think, I think it's fair to say that the high cost may, may come down with some value engineering as time goes on, but at this point in time, we're anxious to find out what contribution the state will make. So, therefore, we're, we're not approaching any cost-cutting measures right now, but maybe Eric could help me out with that.
No, again, I, as I said, it's really not about high or low. Construction costs are very expensive, so schools are costing what they're costing. The school in Burlington is not going to be any more or less expensive than schools built in our area. I would say what's more critical is that the costs are accurate or the projections are accurate. What we don't want to be in a position of is we, we have designed a school that matches our program. We don't want a builder then to say that he or she can build this school, but not for the budget that's been projected. So, it's more about, all of these costs are expensive. I'm not sort of minimizing the expense, but it's really about making sure that when someone looks at the plans and says, "I'm willing to build it for this amount," that we've projected that accurately. If not accurately, then we have to sort of start taking things out of the project, and when we start taking things out of the project, then it may not reflect use in our program as well. So, again, I would be more concerned about the accuracy of the projections than initially the overall cost, because, to be honest with you, the, the costs are just, they're, they're going to appear very expensive to everyone, because they are.
All righty then. Anyone else? Okay, you got anything else on that, Melissa? No? All right. The update on the Fox Hill School Building Committee members' vote. Now, Melissa took care of this already at the building committee, but just since the school committee does actual appointments to these committees, I, I have received messages in writing from John Lyons and, it's Amanda Hanafin, right? Margo Bunka and Melissa Gilbert, that they all wish to be officially removed from that committee, because they were the Pine Glen reps and they don't, they don't feel that they need to be on it anymore. So, I'd just like a, a motion to officially remove those four people from the Fox Hill Building Committee.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to remove John Lyons, Amanda Hanafin, Margo Bunka, Melissa Gilbert from the Fox Hill Building Committee.
Gilbert. It's a G.
What, what are you struggling with over there?
It's Melissa Gilbert, just clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Did I, I didn't say Melissa.
Sharon Gilbert.
Oh, I said Sharon Gilbert. Oh, Sharon, I'm channeling you. Melissa Gilbert. Sorry, Melissa. All right. All those in favor? Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jev O'Ty. Sharon Gilbert, that's funny. Do you remember Sharon?
No.
Okay, moving on. Burlington High School Building Committee, Catherine?
Our next meeting is this Thursday at 6:30.
Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, just to both Madam Chairs of the high school, and there's been lots of visioning that's been going on with high school staff, so they've had two in-person meetings and a virtual meeting, and I believe there will be going over some of the visioning results on Thursday. So, there's a lot of activity going on for the high school as well, and I want to thank the high school staff for participating in those visioning meetings.
Okay. Pine Glen School Standing Agenda Item. I had, does anyone want to beat me to it on the Pine Glen? I have a couple of questions. No? What's the story on the playground?
Myself and the Recreation Director, Brendan Negan, met over there. His crew had delivered some mulch recently, and I think we were in agreement that the current level of mulch was not at the level that we expected, and I believe that they addressed that in the coming days since that meeting. I have since been back there. I know that we do have an issue securing a part for the bridge.
You haven't got it yet?
Nope, it has been ordered, but again, the delay in getting it is what's sending us back, so the rest of the playground is available, but that one section is boarded off and not available for student use currently.
And what about the fence? When do you expect that to be?
So, the fence itself actually has already been repaired. There's some groundwork around it that needs to be addressed, just because some erosion-
What around the playground?
Correct. Yeah, so the fence itself has already been repaired by the Recreation Department, but there's some erosion around on the outside of it where the ground is moving away from the fence area, so that will be addressed as well, too. I have a commitment from the Rec Department to fix that.
And then on the new fencing, when do you expect that to be?
So, we haven't placed an order yet, just because of July one funding, but we are working with a lot of companies right now to start securing some of our positions in either our ordering or future work with these companies. If I could just touch on, obviously, thanking town meeting for supporting the second phase or the second part, additional funding for the Pine Glen air conditioning. So, because we already did have some funding available for us, we were able to coordinate with that contractor right now, get that project underway prior to July one. So, we do believe that we are on target to have air conditioning installed late in the summer, but this summer at Pine Glen. So, fingers crossed that the market is available, as the vendor is saying, but we do look like we, we should be on target to meet that.
Okay. Anyone else have anything on Pine Glen?
I think Jeremy had his hand up, but it's down now.
Jeremy, do you have something on Pine Glen?
No, I was just applauding if they could use it, the AC is going to install before the summer.
I wish it could go in sooner. But, all right, everything said on Pine Glen. So, I asked both Dr. Conti and Mary Ann to add something on a, for Standing Agenda Item for new, old business. Our, our old agendas used to have a whole new business section and an old business section, and that kind of got changed with the format changes. But I think sometimes we have things we want to bring up that are either new business or old business. So, I have a couple of things. Does anyone have any new business or old business they wish to mention?
Madam Chair, business.
Okay, I mean, I have a comment that's related to Pine Glen, and I can bring it up, and it's just-
Hang on, Jeremy, go ahead. Melissa, go first.
I think we have a lot of back and forth with the rec and the fields and the plowing and the you-do, we-do, but I just wanted to say, my son was at Fox Hill for a kindergarten playdate last Thursday. We noticed there was a broken piece of the playground equipment. I forgot to take a picture. I took a picture on Monday and sent it to Brendan, and it was fixed today. So, I appreciate it very much, and the, you know, the younger students at Fox Hill appreciate it. And he said it was lucky it was an easy fix, but I appreciate that he got it out the same day, so I thought for sure it would take a little longer, but thank you.
That's great. Jeremy?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to either put a motion forward or get the agenda item going to let Ways and Means-
Other town committees know, we heard them after town meeting, and get the 20-year spend plan before the committee review draft and then vote on it, in hopes to have it ready to go for when the field studies coalesce, and then we can put everything on the debt schedule like the other town agency had asked us to do at town meeting.
Okay, why don't we give Dr. Conti the job of getting that on- Getting that on a proper agenda. Dr. Conti heard it, okay. All right, so if any, if no one else has, has any, I'll go to my issues here. All right. Several people have asked me to look into, now, I know this is not a school committee decision, but school committee can ask and get the ball rolling on some things. So, several people feel that we should not have graduation on a Sunday, because it seems like somebody gets carried out in an ambulance every year, at least one person, maybe more than one, because of the heat. And I explained that this is something that's planned and decided on at the high school level. This is not up to us, but I did promise that I would bring it to the, to the meeting and ask Dr. Conti to, ask the high school to look at the possibility of changing graduation from a hot Sunday afternoon to maybe a time of day that is less hot. And so, the problem that I have with this is I can bring it up and I can ask you, but people want a follow-up on it. They, they want to make sure that I don't bring it up and then it goes away. They, they want to make sure that I don't bring it up and then it goes away. So can we, you know, whatever, whatever the high school reaction is to this, can we at least, like, ask Mr. Sullivan in the fall to come in and talk to us about planning for next year?
Sure, it won't go away. I, I think you should talk to a school council, I think that would be sort of the mechanism for doing that. You can talk to the kids and teachers, and we can sort of entertain some different proposals. The Sunday afternoon predates, I don't even know how far back it goes, so we will certainly look at it, and...
And it could, it could be that we do maybe a parent survey, maybe people want to keep the Sunday afternoon, I don't know, but right now, there are quite a few people that are saying they, they'd like it changed.
True.
Catherine?
It wasn't only just the Sunday afternoon changing, but some people were suggesting that it go inside.
Oh, God.
And not that I want that, I'm just saying that that, when I read the emails, that was some of the, what was, people were proposing is to either, you know, do it in the evening or do something else, or move it inside, or, I, I think, too, like, remember, I don't know if we're still doing it, but we used to broadcast inside, so that people could sit inside who couldn't necessarily get out to the field, so maybe that's kind of the compromise for the, some of the people who can't take the heat, but just evaluate how we're doing it in general.
Sure. Anything else on this topic?
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to people, too, and I said, "I'm wide open, I'm certainly not married to the, the Sunday at 2:00." I know, one of the teachers mentioned that next year, Sunday's June 1st, so it could potentially push, I don't know, the teacher was concerned about it being later in the week. I, again, I'm, I'm not married to any particular date or time, I think outside is probably important, just for the amount of people that can attend, but when I graduated, I think there was like the, you know, closed circuit room for folks that needed, yeah, and I spoke to Mr. Sullivan about it, and he did say that, I think he would be happy to do a survey or something like that, so it sounds like we're open. When does that get set in stone, I guess? I mean, the date is usually on the calendar in the fall.
Again, the date's on the calendar now, because we assumed it would be the first Sunday in June, which it always is, but we can certainly make a change if we, if we need to, and we would just need to communicate that.
Okay.
Or even a time change.
Or a time change, right.
Yep.
But all these people talking to you about graduation, did anyone mention my speech?
It was amazing, yeah. They liked the hat.
I heard, I heard 6.5 out of 10.
Yeah.
All right.
Joking.
I just wanted to say that I support looking into this as well. I think looking in at, you know, reasonable accommodations, having an option to be inside, different space choices is important, but I think a lot of people really do appreciate it being outside and having it be a real community event, so I think maybe a time change would be the, the best place to, to start the conversation. Yeah, yeah.
Also, the seating, I think we may have to look into that, because I think the stands were full behind us, so I don't know if we add more seating, maybe do ticket, but I think that was part of the problem, is that some of the folks were saving seats as early as 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, so they were sitting out there for a long time. So there's multiple angles, but I definitely think we need additional seats if possible, but that's, that's logistics for next year.
Yeah, the, I think there were a few people that could have used some handicap seating, like, closer to the field.
Reserved seating through the chair.
Anyway, Mr. Sullivan will not be thrilled with us for giving him this project, but...
Again, he redesigned graduation two years in a row for COVID, so I'm just saying, I think we, we have the ability to redesign it, so I think we just need to do it.
Someone mentioned that, remember the, the drive-by grad, the first year, when William graduated? Someone said, a couple of people said, "That was the best one ever." They really liked that one. I mean, you don't have to sit through the whole thing, you just watch your own kids.
No speeches, that's why, is what they said.
No, we have speeches.
Okay.
It was about, oh, everybody had COVID. All right, so I have something else. I would like to request, oh, Nicole's going to not be happy with me. I would like to request, when you can get to it on a, on an agenda, a discussion about the, the financial aspects of the food service, how it's going, what it looks like. I heard, I heard a bunch of stuff, may, could be none of it's accurate, about cost and expenses, and, and, Bob, have we used up all the old, from before we even had Whitsons, all the old supplies, and everything is all gone now?
In particular styrofoam, yes. I'm positive we'll probably find a package somewhere, but in day-to-day use, you'll see recycled trays. There are still some remnants of plastic forks and spoons, but we are moving away from those as well, too. Paper plates and paper, smaller trays, we are there, so 99% majority we have moved away from.
There's no food left, right, from way back then?
How back, is way back when?
From before Whitsons.
I will have to get back to you on that answer, I don't know the answer on that one.
Check the high school freezer? Okay, and as we kind of finish up with these things, are our costs going up? Because now we're not using the stockpile that we had before, and we're having to buy everything, is, and, you know, are you seeing the prices that we're paying going up? Because we need stuff.
Well, in terms of, like, what things used to cost?
No, no, we're no longer using old plates or, or whatevers that we had a ton of before Whitsons came in, and, and so as we don't have any old stuff anymore, the cost's going up for Whitsons to get new stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, may, maybe that could be part of the conversation. Okay, that, that's all my new business, our old business, or whatever you want to call it. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, Eric, you have anything? You want to go away now, right? Okay, it appears that we have need for executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, "To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district and the chair so declares." I do. So we will return to public session only for purposes of adjournment, and I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Jeremy?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're in executive session.